Call the regular City Commission Meeting of Tuesday, March 13, 2012 to order. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we take a roll?
Commissioner Bushy?
Here.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Rubino?
Here.
Mayor Costello?
Here, we're all here. Next item is consideration of the following minutes, regular City Commission Meeting held Tuesday, February 14, 2012. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move this demand for the regular City Commission Meeting held Tuesday, February 14, 2012, be approved as recommended.
Is there support? Support. Questions, comments? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costello?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the dispersment report. Amy.
Payroll on accounts payable for the month of February was provided to all of you during the meeting. Payroll for the month was $50,341.28. Accounts payable was $579,286.81, of which $193,777.01 was paid in tax liabilities.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the February dispersment report be approved as listed.
Support. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Mayor Costello?
Yes, motion carries. And then, Amy, will this month be the last major month of tax liability payments until July comes around? Is that how it's...
Be March. You'll see one more in March, dispersment in March, and that'll be it.
Okay. Next item is governmental reports, always first. Commissioner Zach.
I want to give you an update. Last time that I came here, I talked about an ethics policy, and it was on my agenda to vote on it, but it got pulled.
Oh.
And there is some different legal opinions about whether the ethics policy can be imposed on all of the elected officials besides the employees. And so, this is in discussion, and we've asked for another legal opinion on that topic. There's a couple of elected officials that don't want to hold to the standards of entertainment and some of the other things on the ethics policy. So, to be continued. And frankly, there was a committee that met on it. We tried to do it last term, it got turned down. This term, we, you know, worked on the committee. Former county commissioner, Tim Grimaldi, now state representative, was one of the, you know, people working on it. He had hoped to vote on it before he went to the state, but he didn't have the opportunity. I know that there was some article, something in the Oakland Press, I really haven't seen much in other papers, talking about the potential of mill, of doing something for the Detroit Institute of Arts, such as the zoo, creating some type of authority and imposing two-tenths of a mill type of tax. As your county commissioner, the law states that the county commissioners have to certify the language that goes onto the ballot, and then people are allowed to vote on it. Already, I am getting dozens of emails from people, no new tax, so forth. Nobody in my communities, you know, it's northwest Oakland County, but I welcome comments from my constituents. I'd love to hear your thoughts about whether I should vote or not. I favor cultural institutions, but I am concerned about, there are people losing homes and so forth. And is it fair, as much as I love the DIA, to ask people to, you know, vote on this? I don't know yet, so I'd love to hear from you. I was talking to our attorney, Cooper, today. The lawsuit about reapportionment, for those of you that have not read, we did, the lawsuit has been in favor of, the Court of Appeals ruled in favor of the defendant, of the plaintiffs. And what they found in the present ruling is that you would keep the reapportionment that was done already, that was legally certified in last May, going through the Court of Appeals. And the new legislation would take effect 10 years from now, after the next census in 2022. And then, the Board of Commissioners would be responsible to do the reapportionment. And what I would suspect is that there would be legislation introduced that would change the rules across the state, that all Board of Commissioners would be doing reapportionment, that it wouldn't be specifically for counties over a million under Public Act 280. It is being appealed to the Michigan Supreme Court. I don't know what they're going to do with it, so to be continued. And once again, this is an issue, if the new statute comes through, we will lose our voice and representation on this end of the county. We voted last week to take the Oakland County market, similar, originally, the Royal Oak Market was also owned by the county. There were two county markets, and the county sold the Royal Oak to the city of Royal Oak. But there is a county farmer's market and flea market out in the county complex on Pontiac Lake Road. And previous, until this point, the county has been responsible for running the market and overseeing it. And what we've done now is we've transferred the owner, well, county still owns it, but we've transferred the management over to the Parks and Recreation Department. And we do feel that this will be a better place for it. Food issues, growing, things like that are falling under Parks. The Parks now has some greenhouses, there's a lot of, you know, the issue of food management, local production, there's a lot of good opportunity to improve the market and also approve the whole food distribution production by this transfer. There was one other controversial thing that came up last week. Unfortunately, the county has had a contract with Oak Management Food Service since 1974 to provide the food service at all of the county parks. And I voted against it every time it's come before me. The last time, we were able to put an end limit on this contract in 2015. And as Commissioner Woodward from Royal Oak, you know, said, the contract is older than he is, so back on that visual. So, in any case, what they're trying to do is break apart the different pieces of the food service. There's catering, there's banquet, there's concessions. And really, Oak Management doesn't want to be doing concessions anymore because they're a losing proposition, the way they're set up. I'm opposed to cherry picking. I'm not opposed to putting out the bid separately as three separate entities, but I want it to be bid all at one time. But we lost, you know, that, it is going to be bid out, you know, in pieces. It is best Parks management, I'm told, but again, let me look at the whole, so I can see what the financial and the customer service impact would be for residents. Any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you, Elaine is off.
Thank you.
As always. Any other governmental reports? Recycling. Ted?
Thanks, sorry, your turn.
I'm being the mayor. City Commission, Zach. I have a brief report for the recycling report. There's a green, City Green Committees are coming up. Recyclers are going to have a meeting, going to have a meeting in their facility. And I'm kind of surprised that Berkeley, Ferndale, Hazel Park, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, and Royal Oak have an environmental-type committee. We don't have one yet. I'm always pushing for one. There is some interest, but I think there has to be a little bit more interest. And if there is more interest, then I think that we could have something rolling. We could just establish a structure, what we're going to do, what's our goal, things like that. So, if there's anybody out there or in here interested in an environmental committee, let's talk. The bin blitz, number eight bin blitz, is coming up in April. Bins will be half price. Last month, I talked about the flyer about a workshop where I went into the meeting about make money by saving energy. And I videotaped it, and they allowed me to broadcast it on our cable TV and share it with others. And this is it right here. It's one hour and 41 minutes long. And you figure, oh geez, that's a long time. But I took just one item that I learned. I called up the Detroit Edison and said, hey, can I have a senior citizen rate? I'm 67. Unfortunately, I didn't ask what's the, what's the, what is a senior citizen. Next, next time, I'll report on it. So, instead of paying 6.7 cents per kilowatt hour, kilowatt hour on paying, I can't remember exactly, but it's something like 4.5.
Wow.
So, it's something like 20%, 25% less. So, I think it's a...
Ooh.
What's that?
Nothing.
Okay.
And you got it for yourself, and you didn't care about me?
I can't call you.
Or you didn't ask about the age.
Oh, the age. Well, next month, or earlier, I'll give you the age. Landfill stickers are available real soon. They're, they're stickers about so big, the cup will be about this big. And you can put them on your landfill garbage can. So, it's more distinctive that it's, this is going to the landfill that's forever. So, maybe it'll help people think, oh, this goes into the, into landfill, it was on forever. Maybe I should put it in recyclers. Hopefully, that'll work. And my last item is a visual aid. Up on Florida Town Mountain is now available, well, in two weeks, at the Huntington Woods Library. Isn't it great?
That is great.
Thanks. I hope you like it. Now, I think that's about it. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes, what would the environmental committee do?
What would they do? Well, for example, they would say, oh, look at that, there's a bathroom over there that the light is on 24 hours a day. Where the heat is going out, or the cold is going out during the summertime. The lights are on 24 hours a day, and, just a little suggestion, and low and behold, staff says, let's put something in there. And right now, there's a little gizmo that shuts off, is it a little after 5:00?
No, it isn't. It was aimed at me at City Hall, because the bathroom light in the hallway was on 24 hours. Motion detectors. Unless we remembered to turn it off. And now, it's on a timer.
Ah.
But I think there's a little more involvement to the environmental committees, and Ted and I have talked briefly about it. And I have looked at some of the other committees, and there's a mission and a purpose and some rules and regulations. So, if there's interest, he was going to put it out on his newsletter and see if there was some interest by people. Commissioner Zach? Up, 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 you know the rules.
We have a lovely relationship with the Huntington Woods Library. And so, why couldn't there be a collaborative environmental committee between Huntington Woods and Pleasant Ridge and learn from each other?
Great, yeah.
And even greater. Rather than setting your own separate committee, why not doing it, you know, cooperative?
Does Huntington Woods use SACRA as well? Okay.
We're all in it together, and...
It may be even beneficial to coordinate it through SACRA, because Ted is our representative on the recycling committee, and I'm sure that some of the communities that are participants in SACRA, it would probably be beneficial to have one committee working under that umbrella.
Absolutely.
Because can some of our recycling offset some of the cost for other garbage?
It does.
It does, okay.
Oh, yeah, we get credits.
Okay, so the more we recycle, the...
Yes.
The better.
That's the message. Elaine, I know that you have, in Huntington Woods, you have a pilot program going with bigger containers for recyclables. How is that going, and what's, what's, what's happening with that?
It was a pilot, and now, every household has the wheeling recycling container. And that was, it was purchased by the Men's Club Service Auction last year, and I love it. It's really a dream that you can roll it down.
That's nice.
It has increased the recycling. It's easier and increased it. And I'm not sure, I know that it's not open to every community yet, but maybe in collaborative things, Pleasant Ridge working with Huntington Woods saying, oh, we want these too. But there is a cost to them.
Considerable cost.
It cost about, I think, $60,000, $70,000 to purchase this wheeling bin for the whole...
For each home.
For each home. There was this, you know, pilot that was funded for, I think, a grant, and then I think the investment was around $60,000.
Well, and there's additional costs for collection. I mean, it's a program that is not offered to any other community. They were selected as the pilot program because they're high in recycling numbers. But there's also a cost, additional cost for collection of those containers, and that is something that SACRA is working on, because I think everybody would enjoy being able to have the one big container on wheels. Would make it a lot easier. So, yes, that is out there. What is the additional cost attributable to sorting once they get it back? And not all the garbage companies are equipped to collect those, so... I think they're collected mechanically, are they not, Elaine?
Yeah, they are.
So, that's...
They have this bar, and it's hooked up on the truck, and they dump it.
Dump it in, yeah. That's the other cost, you have to provide the equipment to do it.
You have to have special equipment.
But our contractor has that right now. Yes, they have it. Tringali is one of them that does. And like I said, SACRA is working on this. This was just part of a grant program, and then the Men's Club, as I understand it, they purchased it.
It was the community service project that...
They chose to fund. Two options ago, I think, right?
What?
Two options ago?
It was last year.
Last year. Thank you, yeah.
And can I ask Ted one more question?
Yes.
When is your April bin blitz? Do you have a date for that?
No date yet.
You have to obey your own rules, sir.
Not sure of the exact date.
Okay.
But there is a meeting tomorrow, I'll find out the exact date.
Great. Send us in.
I'll be putting it on cable TV.
Great, will you also send out an email to your people, your list?
Ridge Recyclers Newsletter, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other governmental reports? Liaison reports. Commissioner Crizziak?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a review from our Wednesday, February 29 meeting of recreation. Scott went over the pool hours for the upcoming pool season and announced that there will be no changes in the pool hours in the, for the coming pool season. We went over some of the reasons for the early season hours, primarily, the money-saving benefit that we attained by not opening the pool until later in the day for the first three weeks of the season. And that was explained as a, as a benefit that we're going to continue this year. We'll also be closing at 8:00 PM for the duration of the summer. We also talked about community enhancement. We have a tentative date for the April 14 Antiques Roadshow. It's tentative, I don't know, Scott.
It's a good, it's a solid date.
It's a good date now. So, April 14, we'll have the Antiques Roadshow, and that generated a lot of excitement at the recreation meeting. Everyone's pretty excited about that. And so, that's a go on April 14. It's a Saturday. And another reminder, or initial reminder, for the pancake egg hunt is going to take place on March 31st, coming up. It'll be at 10:00 AM. We also discussed the community garden. And Scott, I apologize, I wasn't at the meeting yesterday, Scott or Sherry, if you'd like to address what was discussed at that meeting yesterday.
Yes, we had our kickoff meeting for the second year of the community garden, and it was pretty exciting, some new ideas. As you know, there was a contest at the conclusion of last year to name the garden, and that person would get a planting square for life for free, and of course, the sign up. And the name was chosen, and it will be Ridge Roots.
Oh, sounds good.
So, you'll see the sign go up pretty soon. And she has not been notified, the winner, yet, but I know she's going to be delighted. We did identify, or select the, changed the fee schedule a little bit, so that there are three different size plots you can purchase, and at different costs, starting at $25, $50, and $75. We decided that the VIP kids would work with the kids in the summer program to go to the garden this year and plant pumpkins in the area that is not purchased. That was an idea that Mr. Zachary brought up to the committee last year, and everybody liked it, and so that's something they want to do this year. And then, the pumpkins would be maintained throughout the summer and would be incorporated into the summer program with the kids over there, so that they could go over and weed and tend and learn about gardening. And then, those pumpkins would be given away at the hayride. So, lots of excitement. I think we got an early start, so there'll be some promotion material. If you had a garden last year, you are guaranteed a spot this year if you're interested in returning. And I think that summarizes everything we talked about. Yeah? So, we're all looking forward to a big kickoff, May 5.
May 5.
Yeah. We're going to have a farmer come in, he will be selling vegetables for anyone who wants to purchase day-of planting or come back later. So, it'll be fun.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Now, could, I ask you a question. Is there, with the pool, we're going to close at 8:00 PM again this year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any, is there considerable cost? I mean, because I know a lot of times, you know, in the summer, especially on the weekends, like Fridays and Saturdays, a lot of the families have expressed an interest in maybe staying open a little later.
Well, I can tell you this, and of course, the Recreation Director can answer if something different, but I know that the, the lifeguard in charge at the pool on a hot night, for example, if it's 85 degrees and it's 8 o'clock, they have the ability to stay open another half hour, if the pool has a number of people. What has been found, and the Recreation Commission has reviewed the numbers, the attendance drops off significantly after 7:30. So, there hasn't been this great demand, but you're right, on summer nights, when it's hot, and people are there at 8 o'clock, they don't automatically close. They may stay open till 8:30 if need be. So, they have that discretion.
And I think that's, that's a great...
Yeah.
...option in extreme situations. One thing I would advise, and this is what we discussed at the meetings, sometimes, those families that are, you know, complaining or talking about extending the hours beyond, I know, Scott, we discussed this at our meeting, how an 8 o'clock deadline with three kids can kind of facilitate bedtime, a little bit better than a 9 o'clock deadline. So, I mean, the kids may be screaming for that extra hour, but it's appreciated that that hard 8 o'clock government-imposed deadline gets my kids to bed a little bit earlier.
It's not me, honey. It's Scott.
Right, so, I appreciate that ability to kind of shift the blame in Scott's direction for that.
That's funny.
But...
Oh, well.
Sherry, do you want to announce the winner of the garden contest on YouTube?
Jen Quinaville?
Who was it?
Jen Quinaville?
Oh, great.
You know who that is? Okay. She is a member, she is a foundation trustee. She submitted...
That's great.
You know, we, we advertised early for people to submit the names, and she actually did submit it long before the end party, the harvest party. So, yeah, we were thrilled. None of us knew who submitted the names.
That's cool.
Scott was very careful about not letting any of us know, so... And you were worried about something like a nursing home, if you called it Pleasant something? Yes, yes. Well, if you don't know, we have, the people who pick up our animals and dogs and, you know, that are dead, is called Heavenly Acres. And there were a couple of them that had, like, Heavenly Something, and so, immediately, I thought of, you know, that sounds not so good.
Heavenly Acres.
And then, someone said, you know, Pleasant Something, it sounded, you know, like a... So, we were able to eliminate some names right off the start. So, Ridge Roots will be fun.
No, I like Ridge Roots. If I could just announce one more final date, as part of our health and wellness effort with the Recreation Department, we've organized a blood drive for April 25th. It's a Wednesday. It'll be taking place at the community center from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. And Ms. Jacqueline Scully, who's been really proactive as far as scheduling this, has really been working with the Red Cross to communicate to our residents that appointments are very much encouraged. That kind of helps the flow down there if, if they have scheduled appointments. But walk-ups are always welcome. But there will be, if you do walk up, you may be, you may encounter a longer wait time just because appointments will have priority. To register online to make an appointment for this event, you can go to redcrossblood.org, and our code for this event is Bridger, and you'll be able to schedule an appointment for that event. And once again, it's April 25th, it's a Wednesday from 2:00 to 7:00. And so have I, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Bushy, thank you.
We'll start with the planning commission, was held Monday, January 23rd at 7:00. We received some drawings regarding the redevelopment of 24, 242 Woodward Avenue, formerly known as Field Arts. Submitted some nice drawings. Obviously, they're conceptual drawings, so there's nothing really to act on at this time, but it looks real encouraging that we're going to get some new development at Field Arts. And as soon as they submit a architectural rendings and some blueprints, we'll be able to share them with the community, and it looks like a great project, and maybe in potential, a restaurant going in there, which would be real nice. With the DDA, really, all that happened on the same date was, they just scheduled concerts in the park dates. The first one will be July 25th, and the second will be September 15th.
19.
I'm sorry, September 19th. And that's really all they acted on this year, this last meeting.
And the one on the 25th will be the family, the children's concert.
Children's concert, and the other one will be the general. Other than that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Rubino, I'm going to jump in ahead of you for a change. I don't normally partake in this part of the meeting, but I am. The state of Michigan has been here to help us again. Commissioner Crizziak heard me with my sarcasm earlier this evening. March 2nd, a letter was sent to Sherry notifying us that on February 28th, the governor signed legislation abolishing our district court and the district court in Berkeley, and mandating that they be combined. And it is to be effective July 1st. And it's up to the five communities involved, which are Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, Pleasant Ridge, and Royal Oak Township, to figure out how we're going to do it. But at least, there is no funding attached to this mandate. And if you read the paper, in the last several months, the SCAO, Supreme Court Administrative Office, I believe is what that stands for, has, after conducting a study, determined that we have 35 too many judges in the state of Michigan, and that while some courts, such as the Oakland...
And that while some courts, such as the Oakland County Circuit Court, they feel needs another judge, other courts have too many for the declining caseload. Number of court appeals positions, for instance, will be eliminated over time. And the Oak Park District Court, which has two judges, is one of the ones also singled out to lose a judge. Now, the concept of cutting back on the judges is a moving target that could take, I saw one article that said it could take till 2038 to fully happen. Because their positions aren't eliminated until they retire or age out or die. And so if, for instance, in our case, one of our judges ages out in 2020, but if that person were to be challenged by a younger person in an election who won, which seldom happens in judicial races, but it has happened, then there would be a reset. And 2020 wouldn't be our date. It would be based upon the age of the next oldest judge. And again, if that happened, then it would reset again. So I doubt that's going to happen, that they'll lose in an election bid. But if they do, that affects all these dates. Interestingly, the state's dog in this hunt is only the judge's salary compensation, not the medical benefits or other benefits. So, you know, most of the quote savings would be achieved by the locals, but we have a situation where we have a court big enough for two people, we have a court big enough for one person, of the judges I'm saying. You could modify the building in Oak Park to fit three in, and they do rotate the courtroom, so no one has to worry about who got the smallest courtroom. But certainly, you know, the idea of building a, another building to house three judges when the goal is to get down to two judges within eight years is, to say the least, a little odd. Sherri got word of this while I was on vacation last week, and we attended the first meeting yesterday, and we've got another meeting to attend two weeks from yesterday, and probably every two Mondays until July 1st until this all sorts out. And I suspect the way it's going to sort out is, you know, a short-term plan and then perhaps another year to come up with a long-term plan, because we are one court as of July 1st. Sherri, did you take away anything further from that meeting that you'd like to add on?
No, I think that summarizes where we are, and I think we're going to figure out where we're going as we go along, so...
Commissioner Rubino?
Honey's a lot better. But the only, I went to the historical commission meeting, and I have to tell you, I'm really enjoying being part of the historical commission because I love history, so it's working out real well. The only thing they have going on right now is that they're going to have the house tour that's going to be June 9th. They have three houses that are confirmed and eight houses that are possibilities, so there could be a possibility of having 11 homes, which we're hoping that happens, or at least close to that. The thing that's going to be different this year with the house tour is that we're going to have a trolley run. We're setting up a schedule where the trolleys are going to be. We're trying to work it out so that we can, parking maybe at the school, and then across Woodward at a parking lot and have the trolley pick you up, take you to the different locations, drop you off. And then as they come around, you can just take a ride back to the parking lot where your car is at. This will be the main area where the tickets will be sold. Also, they have Taco Mama coming in, which I think is interesting. And the Garden Club is also going to get involved in some respect in selling something. They're working out the details right now. So I would hope that at the next meeting in April, they can give you a definite how many homes and exactly how the trolley is going to be set and the schedules will be set. It looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. Last year was, I helped sell tickets there, and they did quite a bit. I think they sold 450 tickets, which is quite a few people that came. And people came from all over the place to look at our homes, and I think that just says something about Pleasant Ridge. There's one other event coming up that's going to happen this winter that I'll talk about later that's pretty exciting, but...
Is that so people will stay around?
In case you want somewhere to hurry by, I can tell you what's coming this winter. I sure, I sure know. But I'll have announcement on that later on. The, one other thing they are working on is that they want to recognize the homes in Pleasant Ridge that have been here for over, have been built for over 100 years. They're working on a plaque system, and they haven't defined exactly how that's going to work yet. But we think it's a unique idea, and that each house that has been built over 100 years can have a nice plaque put on their home. We're looking at Poawik Tile right now, and they've got some schematics, and they have a committee set up to review that and analyze the cost. The cost of the setup is the most expensive part, and we're thinking about having numbers, dates put on it, and there's all kinds of things we're trying to figure out so we can keep the cost down, but yet it'd be very aesthetic for each home that's over 100 years. We do have a list of the homes that are coming to that age, and some of them I won't worry about because it's so far in the future, and the ones that are going to be in the next four or five years, we'd like to get these plaques up. Some other communities have done this, and it's turned out really, really nice. That's all I have. It's pretty exciting.
Commissioner Perry, everything else?
Well, as most of us know, the Ferndale Public Schools bond passed by a very healthy margin of, it was, the overall margin was 71.5% support for the bond, and it was almost 80% support here in Pleasant Ridge. So that, that really speaks to how the residents really come out to help support our community, and, you know, we see how important the schools are to, to all of us. And there were, there was a very large group of parents and residents from Pleasant Ridge who really got out there and really helped get the vote out. And I really commend all of them for all the hard work. But it was great to see people out there on Election Day. It was just nonstop up there. You guys ran such a beautiful election. It was, it was nice, and I don't think people were there just for the cookies, but it was a great day. Now, Ferndale School and somewhat, Amy is here to, Butters is here to speak to this, but the FEF, which is the Ferndale Education Foundation, has their big fundraiser tomorrow, which Amy will tell you about, or Thursday. And it, it really sounds like a great event that's going to be down at the Boogie Fever. And so it'll be a lovely evening. And then also Grease is being performed over the next two weekends by the Ferndale Musical Theater Boosters will be performing Grease. And so that'll be very exciting. So over the next couple of weekends, it's very, they have a lot of different times scheduled, and if you go to ferndalschools.org, it'll have all the times and dates. Now, on the transit work that I've been, the committees and things I've been going to, it, everything keeps moving forward. There's actually a meeting coming up on the 20th. But next Wednesday is something actually that I think could be, for anyone who is interested in what's happening with mass transit for Metro Detroit, there's a speaker that Metro Mode has put together. It's an event called, that's going to be at the Reserve, and it is called, hold on, I don't remember what it's called, but it is, it's a great group, that they're going to talk about, you know, how it's going to affect us and what is, what, you know, just answer a bunch of questions and really look at how this could help improve Detroit moving forward from an infrastructure perspective and everything. You can find, actually, one of, Pleasant Bridger, Brian Boyle is one of the founders of Metro Mode, and he's from right here in Pleasant Ridge. But if you go to modeldmedia.com, you can find out more information about that, too. And then the only other thing is, we had the Coffee with Commissioners last week, which went really well. It's like, the mayor was out of town, but the, all four commissioners were there, and it was some really interesting conversations on everything from water and sewage and stop signs and sidewalks and basketball hoops, and so it was a very, it was very interesting. And thanks again, the cookies were great at that event, too. So thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
We're going to have to impose a calorie limitation.
I know. That is true. They look wicked good.
Sherri, can you report on the Woodward Five since that also, while I was out of town? I picked a great week for vacation. I maximize vacation.
Yes. The Woodward Five received a grant. It's called, it's part of the sustainability initiative, and the five communities that participate in the Woodward Five applying and were granted this grant. The purpose being to define itself, to define a plan, sustainability for the future and where W5 is going. One of the components, this is being led by Oakland County, and they have a team of people that actually show up and are leading everyone in the direction that we need to go. An advisory board was set up, and that advisory board will make, will consider and then make recommendations to the steering committee. And finally, the end result will be a project that is defined for the Woodward Five. The advisory board had its first meeting last week. Mr. Peter Zach and our city planning consultant, John Ecoangeli, attended that meeting. I understand it was well-attended. Each community was allowed to send three representatives. And then in addition to that, Beaumont Hospital, Oakland Community College, SACRA, and I can't think of any other corporations that were at the table. And I think it was a productive kickoff meeting. Pleasant Ridge will be hosting the first public meeting, which will be held on March 27th at the community center. And there will be, I believe the county is going to mail out information, notification on that meeting, but public is encouraged to come and participate, ask questions, provide input so that it does give additional direction for the advisory board to consider. So it's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
Do you know what kind of types of things, like, would they consider, like pedestrian overpass, like over the 696 crazy stuff?
Yes, I can tell you. I can answer that. And when the very first brainstorming planning session with the Woodward Five members, very small group, and the group from the county, it was made very clear that the purpose of the Woodward Five needs to be the focus of the sustainability grant. And the purpose of the Woodward Five is to promote this area, and its, its mission statement is actually live life here. So it's really more of a marketing strategy and the next step into marketing this area because of what it has to offer to potential businesses and residents as far as the business climate, the location, the schools, and the stability, and the housing diversity, all of those things. And I think that's going to be the most difficult task for the advisory committee to stay focused on that, because many people came in with ideas about, let's focus on transit, let's focus on Woodward, let's focus on that. The whole purpose of this is really to get Woodward Five recognized and our area promoted as the best place to live in Oakland County, within this five community district. So that will, the pedestrian overpass won't be considered, I don't think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, public discussion items not on the agenda.
Hi, I'm Amy Butters, and I am a resident here in Pleasant Ridge. I want to thank Commissioner Perry for reminding me about tonight's meeting. I do...
And your address is?
It's 23 Millington.
Thank you.
I do, I do want to thank the residents of Pleasant Ridge for supporting the bond. It was, it was an overwhelming show of support for the Ferndale School District, and it was, it was touching, it really was, to see the numbers and to see how, how much support there is there for the Ferndale School District. I felt a little funny then when Ann suggested that I come and talk about FEF, because here I am thanking you for, you know, the support for the bond, and I'm also asking you to support us again through, through your donations to FEF. But I thought, well, it's, it's a little bit different, because the bond money, as most, as I'm sure everybody in the room knows, goes toward infrastructure, building improvements, you know, kind of the, the nitty-gritty of the, of the school district buildings. And that's, that's how bonds work. The, the school district can only ask for money for that purpose, can only use bond money for that purpose, if that makes sense. Okay. So the Ferndale Education Foundation is a community organization that's separate from the district, and we raise money for, you know, for, for projects for the teachers, for projects that happen, you know, in the classroom. So it's a, it's a whole different pot of money. It's not the same. It's, and so that's why I guess I'd want to kind of distinguish between those two things, where we are raising money for, you know, a different purpose. And so our main fundraiser is this Thursday. It's at Boogie Fever. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. I'm hoping that everyone already knows about, about the event, but I'm just here to make sure that everyone does. It's a, it's a really fun event. We have kids come and perform in the jazz band, so there's a little bit of live music for the entertainment. We have a silent auction with a lot of great items donated by local businesses. We have a live auction, which is sort of the, the main event of the evening, which is also, you know, very entertaining to see, you know, when people bid on the different items. One of the, one, there's so many great items, and one of them, I'd just like to hold up as an example, there's the ice cream store called Treat Dreams. Everyone's familiar with them. They are very supportive of our community, as everyone knows, and they donate an item for our live auction, where the person who is the winning bidder gets to create a flavor. And so that's, that was something that we added last, for last year's event, and we're bringing, he was generous enough to bring it again for this event. So that's, that's a really good one. I think, I don't, can't think of another reason to come really, other than that one. The other, of course, big part of the evening, the climax of the evening is, is the raffle. This year, we are changing it up a little bit. We've decided that our grand prize for the raffle is $5,000. The tickets for the raffle are $10 apiece. Last year and in past years, they've been $20 apiece, so you get two for one this year. I'm hoping I can leave a few with you, Ann. Would that be all right? And so if you'd like to purchase your tickets, I would love to share just an anecdote. If you are unable to come Thursday night, you can still participate by buying a raffle ticket. You don't have to be present, and I can tell you that it has, it happened to me. A couple, a few years ago, I was unable to attend the event. I thought, I'm going to just buy a bunch of raffle tickets, you know, pay the money that I would have spent if I had, you know, bought tickets to the event. And that evening, I got all these messages on my phone, "You won the grand prize!" I actually won the top prize. That year, it was $1,000. And that was pretty cool. So I didn't even attend, and I still won. So if you have plans, if you're not able to come Thursday night, you can still buy a raffle ticket, and you could totally win. So I'm going to leave some with Ann. And... It's $25 for the tickets. The tickets for the event are $25. That includes dinner and dessert. Treat Dreams is going to be providing dessert, and the dinner is housed by you. And, and of course, it includes the dancing and all the fun that you have at Boogie Fever.
Now, I read some of the stuff that FEF has been doing, like the mini grants and some of the camps, like the acting camp and stuff like that.
Right, right. Some, FEF provides mini grants, we call them mini grants, for teachers. They can, they can apply for, these are things above and beyond the regular curriculum that they use throughout the school year. Some examples are, let me think, Camp Skyline is, is one really popular program at the high school where the kids go. It's a leadership, it's a team-building kind of, of an experience. That's one of the big items that FEF money goes toward. My, I have a daughter at Kennedy. Her teacher applied for a grant to, I think it was, I think it's a Michigan history program, you know, that, that she found that she needed a little extra money for, to, you know, to fund for the, for the... fund for the, for the books. One thing that I, I'm hoping you'll be able to read about in Ferneill Patch, I wrote, I just wrote a blog about this, is University High School has a DECA chapter. DECA is a student organization that helps kids learn about careers, and they had, they had a conference, and I participated in that. That's another thing that FEF helps fund. There's a wide variety of programs that FEF helps fund. And again, like I said, these are not, you know, these are the teacher, teacher-driven projects, and so, it's a whole, it's very, it's very, it's very rewarding to be involved with it, so. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave this to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions?
Thanks, Amy.
Any other items not on the agenda?
Just have one question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I heard that they're opening open enrollment to anyone now?
Um, that I don't know. I can find out, though.
Yeah, from what I understand, one of the biggest problems that we have here...
You talking about Rose County?
I'm talking about, for Pleasant Ridge, there was a limit in the lottery system, but now I understand they're going to have open enrollment for all of the residents.
Um, well, I...
If you can address it, come back to the microphone.
I didn't know if you were a parent, or are you from the same...
I am a parent. I'm a parent at Kennedy. I'm not sure exactly, maybe what you heard, but one thing I can, I can talk about that maybe is related to what you, what you heard.
Okay.
There's, Open Classroom is a program that is, is that what you're thinking?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay. Open Classroom is a program that's at Kennedy and at Roosevelt.
Yes, but it was limited before.
Well, it, it's a, it's a magnet program, so it's a lottery to get into it.
Exactly.
Kennedy, up, up until, the change is, Open Classroom was at Kennedy, and then also at Kennedy is a program called Multi-Age.
Right.
Those are both magnet programs, and they're both lottery, you know, adventure, the lottery to get into them.
Yeah, I understand.
Right, okay. What has been proposed, and the school board is going to be voting on Monday, is to make the whole building an open classroom building, and to end the multi-age program.
Okay.
That has been proposed. It's been passed by the, I want to say, Programs and Tech Committee of the school board.
I understand it was passed by a committee. I didn't know it was voted on by the school board, but I understand they, and it was, not the open enrollment, but the open classroom.
Yeah.
I understand they were broadening it, because there has been a lot of complaints, and a lot of the Pleasant Ridge residents were not able to get in, because they were not able to get into the lottery. So, by broadening it, gives an opportunity to more Pleasant Ridge residents to get in their program.
I'm not, there's any number of reasons that led to this. A lot of it has to do with, you know, curriculum, and, you know, how to better serve the students of the school, and, you know, raise the test scores and all that kind of thing.
Right.
Yes, it, the lottery is a big part of it, and is sort of a, you know, it's hard to, it is, it can be hard to get in on any given year, can be hard to get in. This will open up the, the number of spots, of open classroom spots. I don't know the numbers, and I don't want to say, you know, everyone gets to come, you know, there's still going to be a lottery, there's still going to be, there's still going to be that process this year.
But at least the lottery will allow more residents to be able to get in.
Um, that's, that's the theory.
Well, there are more slots to apply for.
That's right. Instead of, instead of two kindergarten, kindergarten classes, there will be three kindergarten classes at Kennedy for the open classroom program.
Are they voting on that on the 19th?
The 19th, the school board votes on that.
Okay.
We expect them to approve that.
Well, sometimes when you hear things, time you hear it is changed, modified.
Yeah, totally. Right, and I hope that's probably what you heard, yeah.
Well, a couple residents called, and they asked me that question, and I said, I don't know. So, I said, when I go to the meeting tonight, I'll, I'll ask, because...
Right, right.
And, and the story I heard was a little bit different than what I'm telling you.
Right, right.
I'm trying to get it to where it makes sense.
Yeah, no, I'm glad that you asked that. I am secretary of the Open Classroom Parent Group at Kennedy, so I do know a little bit of what, what's going on.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you answering my question.
Yeah, yeah. I, and I encourage, you know, everyone to contact the, the district to find out more if, you know, if you have questions about the lottery and about the, and the open classroom program will continue at Roosevelt, so, because it is at both buildings.
Good, thank you very much.
Thanks, Amy.
Consent agenda, Sherry.
Um, Your Honor, there is one item on the consent agenda this evening for your consideration, and it's a request by the Seventh Day Adventist Church to solicit door-to-door during the months of June, July, and August. And my recommendation is that the consent agenda be approved, and I would like to just add and inform residents who are here this evening, and those that may watch this later, the city of Pleasant Ridge does not allow solicitation by anyone other than a charitable or political group. So, if someone comes to your door that is selling something, or, you know, are just soliciting for new windows or whatever, they are not allowed in the city. And you are encouraged to contact the police, and they will be escorted out of town. That's a question that seems to have risen lately, and I know with spring coming, that a lot of solicitation starts. And we are often approached at City Hall for these companies to apply for a permit, and a lot of communities do allow them. We do not. So, please know that if someone is at your door, you can always put up the "No Solicitor" sign on your door, and no one is supposed to approach that, but we all know that not everyone pays attention or respects the sign. But please call the police, you don't have to open your door, we will respond, and we will ask them to leave, so.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda to be approved as recommended.
One second. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Mayor Caselli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, consideration of the request by the Pleasant Ridge Foundation for the city to donate certain items to its annual auction, to be held Saturday, May 19th, 2012. And this year, there is a, a theme for the auction, which is to reforest Pleasant Ridge after the storms of the last couple of years. Sherry.
Mayor and city commissioners, you have before you my memorandum that outlines some of the items that the city will donate to the foundation and an estimated value for those. Couple items are priceless, as you can see, one being Name a Street. There are a few of those offered, and I understand they bring in a good price. And then Vintage Street Signs, I'm reviewing that. I'm not sure we have any vintage left, but those were always a hot-selling item. We do have street signs, of course, but I believe all the wooden ones, original ones are, are gone. We have the Number One Dog License and Dog Run Pass that's available. We have a summer fund package that includes five pool guest passes, a $20 concession, a stand credit, free swim lessons, and a summer program registration, a rental at the community center for whatever you may, for residents only, of course. I named the Name a Street and Vintage sign. We have something new that the recreation director came up with this year, and that is two, two new things that I think are going to bring in just billions of dollars. One is for a private pool party after the pool closes at 8:00, and you can actually bid on that, have the pool to yourself, and that will be for a party of 10. So, I think that's going to be widely accepted. And then, the other thing, which I thought was creative and new and a great idea, which I think would be great to bid on, and that is, you can bid on a poolside table reserved just for you. One in the month of June, one in the month of July, and one in the month of August. And that table will not be put up until the purse, the winner comes in, because we know how it is, it could be up with signs all over it and draped, and there'll be people sitting there, and then when you ask them to move, you know, so, that, that will strictly be a t, a table for whoever bids on that item. So, I think that's going to be really fun and great.
Can we get music to announce their arrival? Is that on their table?
Yes, yes.
Put a band down or something.
Yeah, so, you know, thanks to...
Good idea.
Mr. Peter Zach, I thought that was a great idea.
Those are good.
Yeah, that's fine.
And do we need to do anything, or have we delegated it to you about allowing them to have their liquor licenses? That's not within your purview?
That's just under my report, but I'll do it just now, that they have requested and submitted an application for a special event liquor license for that day. So, that is something that will work with the city opinion.
And the auction is also this year going to be held at Four Ridge, as it was last year, and everybody liked the new venue.
Yes, it is.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city commission approve the items recommended by the city administration as donations to the Pleasant Ridge Foundation for sale at its 2012 annual auction.
This is our support. And for every penny, that we don't get a billion dollars for those donations. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Mayor Caselli?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. On that vein, if I could see Commissioner Crizziak and Perry after the meeting, and let them know what they signed up for in donations.
That's right, yeah.
Item 11, consideration of the certification of delinquent utility bills for collection on the 2012 summer tax roll. Sherry.
Yes, I'm going to ask the water clerk, Mr. Humphries, to step up, but basically, this is a process that we are required to go through by city ordinance, and Darren, being our water clerk, will give you the information as to how many properties we have outstanding.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. I'm prepared to present it for your consideration, a listing of properties with past due lot of balances, that are two or, two and more quarters past due, as certified by the city ordinance. Currently, there are 42 properties that are delinquents. The amounts range from $25 all the way to $1,800. I will be notifying each of these properties owners of their delinquency, and I anticipate that most of these balances will be paid before the May 1st deadline, which is historically how it's, how it is done.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Who in the world gets a $25 water bill?
That was my question.
That is not a $25 water bill, that is just what is delinquent as of November 1st.
Oh, okay. I want to know what they're doing.
Yeah.
See, I have a question. This extreme, this seems to be a high number. Is this normal, 42? I mean, I've never, ever seen that number being that high.
No, this is a little bit higher than, than years past, but we do usually start with a larger list at this time, because they have too many to pay it, and then the payments start rolling in as May 1st gets closer, and we usually just, we only roll three or four properties.
Okay, thank you.
Good. This is the warning shot over there, about.
Right. That just seems to be a lot, that's not 42.
It does.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that the properties in the city with unpaid water and sewage charges for a period of at least two quarters, as certified by the city's water department, be placed on the 2012 summer tax roll as a special assessment.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Karen, I think that was your first report.
Yeah.
Well, two, number two?
Yeah, you did it once before.
Uh, next item is, my pages stuck together, the transfer and supplemental authorizations.
And I'm going to ask the city's financial consultant to step forward, and if there's any questions, she has a brief explanation of the transfer and supplemental appropriations. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. So, this would be the first round of amendments for this 2011, 2012 fiscal year. So, again, the Budget Act, the Michigan, State and Michigan Budget Act actually requires that the budget be amended as appropriate throughout the year. And it's really the fiscally responsible thing to do. You know, you, you do your budget in May or June, and by the end of the year, you need to kind of keep some reins on it. You would hate to get to the end of the year and realize that you budgeted a $50,000 increase of fund balance, and now you're looking at a $50,000 use. This is how deficits get created. So, this is just a way for us to keep an eye on things and react as we need to, and again, not get caught with, you know, kind of the rug pulled out from under us at the end of the year when the auditors come out. So, you have in front of you two, two different types of amendments. A supplemental, where we are actually requesting a change in the overall increase or decrease of fund balance. So, for instance, the general fund, the original budget was requesting or anticipating an increase in fund balance of, I think, about $47,000. These amendments would actually bring that down to about a $12,000 increase. So, it is changing an overall revenue and expense net activity, whereas the transfer appropriations are really just asking for a change from one line to another. There's no overall net change in what we anticipate fund balance to do. So, these amendments are actually affecting about eight of the city's funds. Again, the general fund will probably be the largest, most, would have the most activity in it. And again, as I alluded to regarding the general fund in particular, we did anticipate originally about a $40,000, $47,000 increase in fund balance. These amendments would bring it down to only a $12,000 increase, but we're still on the plus side, so, so that's a positive thing.
What would be the, the biggest items accounting for that change?
Yep, as far as revenues, we did get some updated amounts from the state regarding state share revenue, so there's about a $5,000 increase in revenues for that, because we budgeted pretty conservatively back in May or June. We didn't really know what was going on, so, that was an increase there. We also had some, some monies come in related to the Dream Cruise. Those dollars vary every year, so again, conservatively, you know, we kind of left it out of the budget, and so now we do have that check in hand, so we have an addition there. The other items are really very minor, very small changes, you know, we have a couple of small dog licenses, you know, $350 more. We're actually at currently $350 more than we had originally budgeted, so we'll make this in the budget to get us to actual. I don't want to jump the gun, and, you know, budget additional, we'll just kind of keep going as you go and keep ourselves up to date. As far as expenditures, again, a couple different things vary across different departments, that's why you see so many line items. We did have some differing results in originally anticipated dollars as far as employees' contributions. This was the first year we were requesting employees to help contribute to health insurance and retirement, and after kind of the dust settled and negotiations were done, some of those dollars were a tad different. So, we do have some changes there. Unemployment was another one. The city received a letter that unfortunately, we are part of the NML, and our balance dipped into the deficit, so we were asked to, you know, kind of make up that difference. So, we did have an additional check we had to write this year, so we want to increase that line in and make sure we're keeping up to date with where we are. Some inspector fees, but then again, on the revenue side, we have the revenue coming in from some of the permits to help offset that. So, really, very minor things, just a lot of them, so it can be a little daunting to look at. Another item I did want to talk about that affects actually a couple funds was related to the Labor Day storm that we had. So, again, after the dust settled, and we saw what our true expense was for that cleanup, we do have an increase in the sanitation fund for some of those charges, as well as some pool repairs that were needed in the pool operating fund, so that is another large one that was very unexpected, unfortunately. So, I don't know if you have any other questions about any specific lines, but those are kind of the, the big need of them.
I would observe that with the prediction of 75-degree weather for the next week, that if we have a snowstorm, it's going to be because we moved this money out of winter.
I know. I know. It is Michigan, again, I hate to jump the gun, but come on. So, yeah, that's, that's exactly what the transfer line was, you know, we look like we're going to hit some savings in the, the snow removal and winter services line in the major and local, so we're going to help cover some of the cost of cleaning up the streets after the storm.
Okay, questions?
So, the pool thing, that was the damage that was done to the pool?
There was some damage, yeah, there was some of there.
Was that the, wasn't that covered under insurance, though? The sign and all that, or the pool deck and all the damage?
Um, I don't know.
Scott?
Most of it was covered, the sign and...
Yeah, most of it, we're still waiting on a couple of the items to come in, like the scoreboard is a special order item, so it'll be in, it'll be in by this month, and there's a couple other items that we have to get there, still yet to become, coming in, because they're special order.
Yeah, but regardless of whether we have offsetting income, we still have to adjust the expenditure side of the budget.
Yeah, this is where we are now. So, you know, hopefully, next time I come to you, I will have an increase in the insurance portion line, so.
Sure, right.
So, we want to stay as realistic as we can right now, so we're not caught up.
No, I appreciate it. I'd rather have you be that way. I appreciate it.
And Mayor, to your point about the snow, and maybe Sherry or Molly, you know, I was just going, when I was going through the accounts payable, right, I saw the line for assault delivery, right? We just cut a check for assault delivery. What are we going to do with all the assault?
Salt glass, we'll buy next, less next year.
I mean, is that just...
It's a commitment that we have to purchase. In fact, we have to, I think by next month, submit our order for the upcoming lunar season. Yeah, you have to order. Yeah, you have to order way in advance.
Or you don't get it.
So you are obligated to purchase the minimum amount of salt that you ordered, and it sits, it keeps, and fortunately for us, we don't have to store it down at DPW anymore. We're able to store it off-site, so.
Rayla, did they put a facility up now that covers, is covered and everything, right?
Yes, right. But I, and this is a rough estimate, I took a look at what we thought the savings would be with the mild winter that we had, and usually at this time of year, we're agonizing over being over budget on that line item, but I think we have saved somewhere between $23,000 and $28,000 just in the cost of snow removal.
This is great.
That's a great thing.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on adopting Transfer Appropriations A 2012-001 and -002?
So moved.
Works for me. Is there support? Support. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costello?
Yes, motion carries. Molly, your earlier report covered the supplemental appropriations as well, correct? So items 14 through 21, that last one was items 12 and 13, items 14 through 21 are consideration of supplemental appropriations A-2012-001 through and including -008. Is there a motion to approve those supplemental appropriations?
So moved.
Is there support? Boy, we're getting relaxed. Maybe we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. City manager's report. Sherry?
I will just let you know that the Board of Review started today. They worked from 1 until 5. They will return tomorrow, working from 1 to 5, take a break for dinner, and back from 6 until 9 tomorrow night. If you have not made an appointment and still would like to discuss with the Board of Review, they do take walk-ins, but you may have to wait for someone who has made an appointment ahead of you, but feel free to go if you need to. They will work Thursday again from 6 until 9, and then that will complete the March Board of Review. And other items that I had have already been talked about. I'd just like to add a reminder that mark your calendar for May 5th for the opening of the community garden, and that's the kickoff party that'll be fun, going to start at about 9 or 10 o'clock in the morning. Watch for info. We are in the throes of preparing the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I have been meeting with department heads and reviewing the budget numbers, scheduling workshops for DEA to get their budget, the historical commission to get their budget done, and then get together with the City Commission to take a look at where we're going for the upcoming year. As I mentioned before, the governor wants at least a two-year budget. Three years is what the language actually reads. I will have all that finalized before we adopt the budget in June, because my understanding, it's a revenue expenditures report, and I think we'll be okay to be able to do that. I don't have anything else.
And then to send an appointment for the Board of Review, is that number that's on the website?
The number's on the website, it's on the back of your assessment that you received.
Okay.
And you can still call and make an appointment, so.
Okay.
I think we had 13 or 14 total, maybe 14 appointments so far, so.
Thank you. Any other business?
Mayor, I just had a few questions for Sherry, if you don't mind. One of them would be an update on the Poler situation. I know we've discussed in previous meetings, potential of a public hearing. I don't know if in your conversations with the DEQ, if that's been, if there's any plans on the horizon for that scheduling of the public hearing, or...
I have not heard a word from Poler. I know that the Ferndale City Manager was going to request a copy of the information, the application that Poler submitted, and any other related information. That request has been submitted. In fact, I need to follow up with her, because as you know FOIA, there are certain deadlines that must be met, and even with an extension, we should have that material by now. I don't have it, and I have not heard a word.
Okay.
So, but I will let you know.
But we can assure residents, because, you know, they're still anticipating the opportunity to participate in a public hearing, we can assure our residents that a public hearing will be held.
Absolutely.
It just has yet to be scheduled.
That's absolutely true. It's a mandatory requirement.
Right. Okay, and last item, I know this came up in the coffee discussion, and some neighbors over the weekend, you know, would like just some information on the fence along the train tracks in Gainesboro Park. You know, it's consistently been an issue, but it seems like over the last couple of years, it's gotten, the openings in the fence have gotten, you know, more spacious, so...
I'm happy to provide an update, and I've been here long enough to know a few things about the fence down at Gainesboro Park. That issue, and in fact, someone brought it up last night at a committee meeting I was at. It comes up about every 10 years. That was a statement I made, and so just on a lark, I thought I would pull file. And I did, and the documentation I have, the only, there's a reference to 1966 in it, but when the city took an active role to see if there was something they could do about repairing the fence and asking the railroad to participate in the cost, the year was 1991. Now, there's correspondence that goes back to 89. I typed it, because my name is at the bottom, you know, under the slash, and I remember that. It's just typing these letters up. It was sent to all elected officials. It was sent to the Grand Trunk Western Railroad and a few other people. And there were responses, although they were a little bit late, there were responses, and Grand Trunk, at some point emphatically states, "We have absolutely no obligation", that in 1966, apparently, the city was the one that constructed the fence, and the railroad allowed the city to construct the fence at its sole cost, and in doing that, we gained some parkland. So although it doesn't show how much, a little bit of that land that apparently was behind the fence belonged to Grand Trunk, and they let the city have it for the fence. And then when we get up to the time of repairing it, and it's interesting, because in 1991, the correspondence refers to the frequent and constant repairs that are needed from areas that have either been cut or bent and the bottom bent up.
Right.
Which are the very same problems that we're talking about in 2012.
Right.
10 years later, and it was under my signature at this time, pretty much went through the same process. The difference was, in the early 2000s, I had a personal friend that worked at the railroad, and so I used that contact to see if he could work with me and see if there was something that the railroad road would at least contribute some funding. By this time, as you know, there's a lot of bramble, brush, and trees that have actually become part of the fence, that have grown into the fence. And during that time span, a lot of money, time, and resources were spent, not only on getting estimates for what it would take to replace it, but some ideas on what the city could do to maybe build in front of it, build a brick wall, you know, all of those kinds of things were explored. We did get estimates for replacement, it was considerable cost, but nonetheless, frequent and constant repair has gone on to the fence there, and frequent and constant damage is done to the fence there. I am not sure how you, there is no way to prevent someone, first of all, because the people that are doing the damage, we know and have seen evidence of, you know, maybe they're sleeping down there, they sleep on the railroad tracks around the area, and, you know, you never could catch them. And then, you know, storms come along, or trees die, and they fall on the fence, but now it's another 10 years has gone by, and it's interesting, you know, like I said, that this comes up again. It's almost exactly every 10 years. But anyway, I think over the past 10 or 20 years, the city has spent a great amount of money, and there is correspondence, so you can share this with anyone and everyone, the railroad is not a resource that we can contact, and we have that documented. But if the city, and again, every park project that has ever been conceptually planned or drawn includes some kind of more permanent, certainly aesthetically pleasing barrier wall along that area. And I think in the meantime, and, you know, we'll talk about this again at budget time, in the meantime, we do our best at least to try to make it safe.
Right.
It's always been consensus that we do not want to remove what's down there as far as the shrubs or brush, or, because that at least does screen a little bit, it screens the railroad tracks from the community. So that's the update, and I wanted to be able to give you that tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I mean, one thing we can, I mean, what could we advise our residents, you know, as far as, you know, actions they could take? I mean, could, I mean, as far as, I mean, I know we have a budgetary sessions, you know, scheduled upcoming, and there'll be discussions there regarding expenditures for that fence activity. You know, just communicate to them, maybe, I mean, I don't want, you know, instigate a wave of letters, but I do know there's a lot of concern out there, and maybe advise our residents if they are concerned to let Ann Perry know.
I agree with the fundraiser. They have a check in the letter.
I think, again, there's always a certain amount of dollars allocated in the budget for maintenance of the fence. I can tell you before we go into any budget session that there is not going to be enough money anywhere in any fund to replace that fence. The hope is someday to incorporate that into a plan for the park, and, you know, that's no doubt going to have to be a phased-in project. Maybe that will be the first part of it, which is something, you know, I know the foundation would be willing to work with us on. At this point, you know, we will continue to maintain it to the best we can.
Okay.
I love to see the look on the contractors when I walk them down.
I bet.
Because I won't go up too close, so, you know, we make Scott go with us, and then, you know, and then they look at us to say, wow, you know, how am I going to tackle this? But you, and if you've walked it, you'll see sections...
Yes.
That we have actually replaced, some small pieces or whatever. And unfortunately, those will be damaged again, or ripped or torn.
And we've looked at grants and things like that to try, because this one just becomes a safety issue versus even aesthetic, just because...
I agree. It's more the safety part of it, and I think that's why we try to at least maintain it where it's closed or tied down to the ground as often as we can. I know it's not pretty, but safety is, I think we have to just worry about the safety part of it until we can get a permanent plan in place.
And the trees shield the ugliness.
Right. Yeah, because you really don't see it that much, but I guess, you know, and I know you're looking into grants all the time, so if there's any kind of a safety...
I don't know.
Even grants are matching.
Well, and, you know...
Very seldom do they give you, it can be 50/50 or 75/25, and you still have to have enough money to generate to be able to be part of that, part of that grant, to get a grant completed in a month.
We always keep our eyes open, though. Maybe from the safety standpoint.
Did your file have in it at least what the costs back then were of putting up a wall?
Oh, our park project from probably 10 or 15 years ago, it'll be in there. I didn't, that's a whole different file.
What did you say, Fran?
I said that'd be a whole lot of dollars.
Yeah.
That's quite a distance.
It's a 10-foot fence.
It's anywhere between $50 to $60 a foot for a poured wall.
Well, yeah, it was poured and placed concrete.
I was thinking of poured wall.
Oh, that's even more...
It's cheaper, well, it's cheaper than...
It's cheaper than brick.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But not cheaper than fence, though?
No, but...
Oh, no.
That would be the more permanent solution, because you can't do it with white fire cutters.
Right, 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 right.
It's a challenge.
At one time, the poured-in-wall, I think, was upwards of half a million dollars.
Yeah, I know, as I said, it'd be...
It's a field all the way to Cambridge.
Yeah, because we went back to the architectural drawings and said, okay, what would happen if it looked like sections of poured-in-place, then fencing, then, yeah, we did.
Because it was, removal of the trees is...
That's all.
It was just out.
You don't want to do that.
It was upwards of a half a million dollars in hog.
I appreciate you reviewing that, because, you know...
You're welcome.
Like we encountered on Thursday, you know, residents are concerned about that, so...
There were a couple other quick things that they were, and I'm sure you've heard about this several times, and I've heard about it through the past year or so quite a bit, are the stop signs over like at Oakdale, and that there aren't any actually, and that residents would really like to see it. And I think that sort of couples one of the other issues that was brought up, which was people sort of rolling through stop signs and things like that right now. I think it could be interesting for us as a city to really do a campaign about safe driving, sort of slowing our speeds down and whatever, like something that does go into the ridger and goes into something that we put out there as a real conscious message to people, because, and I was admitting my own guilt tonight on, I was coming off of May 1.
You're on camera, you know.
I know.
Don't have my headphones lying.
No, it's not.
She's about to admit something.
But it's like, then I think, you know, we all...
She was almost speeding.
Almost, but not, and then I walked, and so I slowed it down. But, you know, it's like we all do get a little bit, because it's our neighborhood, so we feel so familiar.
Same route.
And, so the stop signs were something that I know, I've heard many people who live really close to Oakdale and Cambridge and everything, because there's a lot of children over there and everything.
That was looked at a number of years ago, and some of the stop signs were removed on a recommendation by a traffic engineer. And contrary to what people may think, that, you know, a sign actually deters a situation, sometimes the opposite is true. The stop signs at the ends of the side streets going westbound onto Ridge Road, those stop signs have been removed based on his recommendation. The stop sign, I believe at, if you're going southbound on Oakdale at Cambridge, there is a sign there. And I can't think of another...
I think these are westbound onto Oakdale.
Those have been removed.
Right. And I think that's...
I think you said Ridge when you meant Oakdale.
Oh, I meant Oakdale, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. And so I think people were really concerned about that, a lot of the residents who live there. I don't recall the gentleman's name who was...
Jim.
I've had a couple, right, and I have had a couple people call it right away after the signs were looked at and removed, but, and I can verify with you and put it in the memo, actually, there have been no incidents. The police have, you know, obviously recorded anything. It's something about being a natural break, and if you put the stop sign there, it actually, it doesn't do anything to promote stopping or rolling through, because like you said, people will roll through a stop sign whether it's there, even if it's there. So that is the answer to...
I think one thing that an expert pointed out was that children may be more expectant that adults are going to obey the stop sign and just walk out, whereas they might not do the same if there's no stop sign. That was part of what he was pointing out at the time.
That's true.
That, I'm sorry...
There are a lot of different signs.
That children expect adults to obey the law, and they don't always obey the law, so that you are actually increasing the risk that children crossing at certain corners by having a stop sign where drivers would not expect to find it. I'm going with memory.
It gives a false sense of security, not only to pedestrians, but to drivers as well. That was profoundly pointed out when we did the traffic study on Woodward Heights with the stop signs.
Well, you agree with it.
Yeah. It's, right, I think, well, I know a lot of residents have really brought up, you know, ones who have little kids and ones who don't, who are very concerned, just, I mean, and also, I mean, does that affect the law of if you just run through there, versus, does that mean it's not a stop?
If you roll through, it's not a stop.
If you roll through, it's not a stop.
Check the points on my kid's record.
No, I mean, like if, so if I'm going down Elm Park at Oakdale, and I just, I just sort of roll through and...
Well, if, whether there's a stop sign or not a stop sign.
There's not a stop sign there.
Then you don't have to stop.
They're not rolling. Right.
Right.
I just have a comment to that. Before the meeting tonight, I went down Oakdale, and a car came down Camerton and went right through, and if I wouldn't have been going a little bit slower, we'd have hit each other, and we would have had our first incident.
But you didn't.
I know, because I went slow enough, because I know there's no stop sign there. However, yet on the street previous, there's a yield right-of-way sign, but the other ones don't have anything on it. So my curiosity is, why does that one have yield and the other ones have nothing?
Shouldn't be there.
Either it shouldn't be there, or should the rest have yield?
No, it shouldn't be there. Yield was not recommended for any of the streets.
Well, I know, that's why, I didn't understand why they put a yield at the end of the street.
Maybe I'm not even aware it's there, Frank.
Okay. I want to disagree with your traffic engineer, but I really think there should be stop signs at the end of those streets. I think that'd be a better move. We shouldn't wait till somebody gets hurt before we put a sign up. And you're right, some people don't obey it, and kids get a false sense of security, but we put ourselves in jeopardy by not putting a stop sign there, and if somebody does roll through the intersection and have an accident, should we have not at least put something to warn people that you need to stop before you go into or cross the street?
Well, before we go any further, Sherri, do you still have those reports available?
I probably do.
That might be copied and distributed to everybody.
Sure.
We can all talk about it with the benefit of that.
Okay.
Of that background and refreshing our own recollection of those that saw it the first time.
Absolutely.
I have one more thing I wanted to ask you, Sherri, I made a note of at the beginning of the meeting and I forgot. You and I talked today about something that you plan to put on the agenda at the next meeting about a new investment option that's available to us.
Yes. Our investment committee meets on, well, they meet as needed, but they also meet on a quarterly basis. And one of the things that we have been looking at was a new opportunity to invest some of our funds with Oakland County. It's a very nice plan where, although it's not a great interest amount, it is, there are no great interest amounts anywhere, but the nice part of investing in their plan is it's, can be immediately liquid, so that some of the problems we have run into with long-term CDs, or even, you know, a little bit longer term, six months to a year, is there's a great penalty if you needed access to your money right away. So there's no penalty, the fees are nominal, many of the communities have taken a hard look at this, and we decided to look at this in Cedars, which is another one for some of our longer-term investments. What's required by both of them to move any money is a resolution by the governing body, and I did mention it to the mayor since our investment committee meeting was just last week, that...
Again, perfect timing on my part.
Perfect timing, I'm telling you. And I was, and I actually asked if it was something we could put on the agenda for this evening, but he agrees, and we are sticklers about not adding items to the agenda at the last minute, and even though that's non-controversial, it's, we'll just wait till April. But that will be coming to you on the April agenda with a recommendation for investing some of our money with Oakland County.
And I assume it would be part of the layering, that we would have a layer there that was immediately liquid and still had the longer term.
I don't think that one will be layering, but the one, the others...
You're not proposing this?
Yes, it'll be a ladder.
Right.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then for those who don't know, what Cedars is, is a program whereby you can, you do get a slightly less yield, but you can multiply your FDIC insurance, so the current level, I think, is a quarter million. But you can, in a Cedars program, have as much as forty million FDIC insured, because what you do is you pick a lead bank that has it, and then it spreads the money out among other banks that are Cedars banks.
That's exactly right.
And I wish we had forty million to...
So do I.
At least we can get all of it insured.
But nonetheless, right, we are just, we, the investment committee's charge is to continuously look for the best investments for the city and within our limitations of the state statutes for municipal funds. So that'll be coming to you in April.
Okay, thank you.
There was one other thing, I'm sorry, that the, at the coffee, that people were very concerned about, just from a, another safety standpoint, are, is the sidewalks, because, you know, we have, you know, there are several situations where sidewalks, which I understand that is a big problem, you know, it's a big expense for homeowners.
I know. Sidewalk programs.
Yes.
In fact, I did get an email from a resident and thought I'd go take a look, because the story was, we haven't done a sidewalk program in twenty years. That's not exactly true. The last sidewalk program we did was in 2007, and prior to that was 2004. The one in seven was fairly small. It's, it takes quite a bit to administer a sidewalk replacement program, but if that's something the city commission wants to do, again, we have to talk about it at budget time, because obviously the city pays the bill, and then we bill the residents for the cost. And one of the things that I recall about sidewalk replacement and those that have been elected officials during these programs, they're difficult, because you often have residents who either cannot afford or disagree with you on the criteria. And I, if I recall correctly, Commissioner Perry, I believe it was anything above a half inch or more, it might have been three-quarter, then those sidewalks are identified in need of replacement. And once you identify those and mark them, then you must go through with the program, because now you are aware of the danger. Homeowners are responsible for repair and replacement of all sidewalks. What we have been doing with our infrastructure improvement program is if a great percentage of the sidewalks, and there is a number, of the sidewalks must be replaced, then we have been replacing the entire section as part of that program. But again, that is, if the city commission wants to, it is something that we have routinely done. It is not a great, it's not a fun program.
No.
Sherri, if I recall correctly, also part of the reason it's been five years is people were losing their jobs right and left, and we had to pile that expense out.
That's exactly right, for the last time. We halted, even looking at it, we didn't go out to bid, and you have to have a good no, we tried a volunteer program for, I think, twice in the last five years, a volunteer program where if you wanted your sidewalk flags replaced in front of your home, you could contact the city, and we would ask our contractor who's in town to do that work. So at the time, and I remember this, at the time, the cost of replacing the sidewalk flag during the first time around was about ninety-five dollars, and then the second time around, it was a hundred dollars. So it was a, you know, it was a great price, and we had two people call. They just, you know, it's an expense that no one wants to have to do, even though you're glad you do it afterward.
Right. Which, you know, because when my street was done, you, we did a pretty, I think there was probably a pretty aggressive
Oh, yes.
Replacement plan, program at that time. But I know other street, which I, I think that financial element is...
It is.
I mean, not doing it for five years makes sense from, you know, the economic standpoint. But, yeah, it'd be interesting if there's some kind of a measured response you can do to it, you know, like the volunteer thing or something, I mean, I can totally understand the...
It's tough, because they're going to be here...
Because there's a danger.
There's going to be people here begging you for, you know, the exception.
Sherri, now, can someone, now, with the streets being repaired this year, can we incorporate the volunteer program again? Because there was
Maywood, all of it's going to be replaced.
A voice of concern that they've claimed that they've, were willing to pay for their sidewalk in front of their house, and no one responded, and true or not, I mean, is that available again if we're doing Maywood this year?
Well, first of all, we couldn't get a program pulled together
For this?
For this year, by July 1st, because you have to go out to bid. You can ask the contractor that's coming in, but remember, that's a bid that's already prepared.
Right.
Reunion on Friday.
Right.
So we'd have to add that into the contract cost. We did add into the contract cost the intersection of Kensington and Indiana.
To extend the unit prices.
You'd have, you just have to mention that to the contractor. Not all contractors want to do sidewalk programs. Many do not.
Especially with road problems.
Yeah.
That becomes a real expensive...
Well, I mean, it's something we could do this year if you wanted to do this. And when you go out to bid, you usually get a pretty good price, but you have to guarantee the bidder a certain amount of work. That's the other...
Well, I'm just thinking of volunteering instead of forcing it on the residents, since people...
Well, we've tried volunteering twice.
Oh, I know, I'm just, I just...
I know, I know.
Throw it out there, that's all. Because it was...
It's not an easy thing to do.
Well, the bottom line is, if the city commission wants to do it, just say the word.
I was part of the sidewalk program in this Perry Street, and I remember those streets being marked, and we had to verify, we all walked down those streets. It became a major issue with hardship and...
Right.
Was there a unit price for sidewalks on Maywood that we could ask as an option? Will you agree to extend unit pricing to other streets for sidewalks?
We can ask, but they're not going to extend the price without guaranteeing them the work. Go ahead, go ahead.
Scott, you know, a lot of times the unit price for, to do Maywood where there might be thirty, thirty flags in a row, is different than traveling from Maywood to Oakdale where they only have two slabs. It's much easier to pull out thirty slabs in a row than to pull out two slabs, and then all of a sudden, two slabs turns into four slabs because of the slope and this and that. So the unit prices become difficult for the contractor, because, and we've had problems a lot of times, they don't want to go to the other streets, because he's like, I'm going to lose money doing two flags on the other side of town, even though we're such a small town. It's just, unit prices, a lot of times, are unit prices for...
Yeah, no, the city has to go out and mark these flags, so that we have an idea of how much concrete we can offer, and how much work we can offer that contractor.
So it sounds like it's either next construction season or a separate...
No, it's a different contractor, so you could actually do it this year.
Okay.
No, you could do it this year.
I said next construction season or a separate contract.
Yes. So they're tearing out the slabs and putting them in, so they're responsible for both ends of it?
The contractor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's, that's a sidewalk replacement program, and if you want to do it, then you just, you guys have to say the word.
Well, I like the volunteer idea, personally.
Say motion to adjourn.
It's a rule.
Does that support? I'll support your motion. All in, all in, Mayor. I adjourn.